Call this meeting to order. The Effingham County Planning Board Meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. We're going to follow the prayer with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to ask that everyone who is able to please stand for both. I'll ask Mr. Alan Zipper if he will open us with prayer.
Gracious heavenly Father, be with us tonight as we conduct business Effingham County Planning Board. Watch over all our servicemen and women and first responders that keep us safe and help us during this season to remember that you, Christ, are the reason for the season. And thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. This agenda, is there anything we need to add or delete from this agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
No changes. I call for a motion to approve this agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Minutes from November twenty-first. Are any corrections or additions? Here none. I'll call for a motion to approve these minutes.
I make a motion to approve minutes.
Motion for approvals. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at our Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting will also be a public hearing. That meeting is in this room as well. Items that are approved as well as denied will move forward to the county commissioners. Like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak, whenever the item of your concern is called, that you would come forward to the podium. And we ask that you would sign your name as well as state your name for the record. Is there anything further, Ms. Donegan?
No.
Item number one is a public hearing for New Life Worship Center Church. Request to rezon one of seven point two four acres from AR one to AR two to allow for a parsonage. It's located at one oh three Dogwood Drive. This is the second district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant wishes to create a one acre lot, plus or minus, which is going to be a home site for the pastor to live on site with the church because it does not meet the five acre minimum threshold for AR one. It needs to be rezoned. Staff is recommending approval.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Flippo. I am a pastor there at the church at New Life Worship Center. And our intentions is to have a parsonage there for the church. So, and that's the reason for the rezoning from AR one to AR two.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments at this time? Can I get you to sign in, please, sir?
I'd...
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item two is a public hearing for Ronald Tyler. Request to rezon point one six two of three point three four acres from R one to R two to allow for a recombination with an adjacent parcel located on Ebenezer Road. This is the fifth district. Ms. Donegan?
The applicant wishes to sell a small piece of his property here in blue to a lot in Brookstone down here, basically extending the lot in Brookstone's backyard by point one six two acres. Because of that, it needs to be rezoned to R two to match with the parcel it's being added to. Staff is recommending approval.
Questions or comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? No discussion from the board. I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Mrs. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item three is a public hearing for Christie Canis. Request to rezon one of six point eight acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the separation of a home site located at three forty-six Blandford Road. This is the fourth district. Ms. Donegan?
The applicant wishes to subdivide this parcel for tax purposes and also to make it easier for future possible sale with the home site being separated. It is going on an easement. It does not over-serve the easement. Staff is recommending approval.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Katie, can you put that other picture you just had back up there? The little, small, blue square with the even smaller blue square in it?
Yes. That is, that is the proposed new lot.
That's the lot?
Yes.
Anything further from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this request?
The applicant isn't here.
She's here.
Christie Canis?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the owner. And I just wanted it separated. I live in three forty-eight, but they only recognized three forty-six on my insurance. And my home's considered an additional building. It's not considered another residence by my insurance company. And also, like she said, if I ever did want to sell my rental property, I could maintain my own home.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Nothing from the board. I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve with all the staff recommendation.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, ma'am. Item four is a public hearing for Jesse Edwards. Request to rezon six acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located at four hundred Haddon Road. This is the third district. Ms. Donegan?
The applicant is proposing to create a approximately a two acre home site in the rear of the property. This would leave two lots, neither of which meet the five acre threshold for AR one. Therefore, the entire six acres needs to be rezoned. Staff is recommending approval.
Any discussion at this point? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
I'm Jesse Edwards. The reason I wanted to do it was, uh, my brother-in-law wants to move and my wife's sister wants to move behind me and just be closer to family. They have two small boys and me and my wife have two small boys. And they just wanted to be closer to us.
Got you.
That's it.
Questions? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Guy Scherrhaus. I live on Haddon Lake Road. My property borders Jesse from the private road. This isn't even a public road, but a private road in front. My land borders all the way to the back. I've been living at that address for probably thirty-nine years. That's the type of living me and my wife was looking for. We didn't like subdivisions and afforded a piece of property in there. I got sixteen and a half acres. And the road being private, for years, we asked the county to help us with that road. They wouldn't touch it, wouldn't have nothing to do with it. So me and all the neighbors got together and rebuilt that road. We've got a lot of man-hours and a lot of money in it.
There was a lot of big potholes in that road.
That's exactly right. If you've ever been down it...
I've been down it. It's Alligator Alley, isn't it?
I don't know, but I know a lot of people coming there with motorcycles wanting to jump. But anyway, that was our type of living we wanted. And some of the land has been sold in the back of field. Actually bought it, subdivided it, and we're steady, steady working on the road. We can't afford no more traffic on there. We can't keep it up as, as we are. Every time it rains, we've got problems, potholes. All the neighbors, most of us over the last thirty years have fixed it up and kept it going. And I just feel like the more we start subdividing, it's just the start. I mean, when people start subdividing and it moves on, then people that are looking for that type of living is no longer going to want to live, you know, in a subdivision or next to a trailer park. And then that land's going to be subdivided where he can get his money back out of that land. And I oppose it. I'm not for it. I don't know what else I can bring up besides the road, our maintenance, our type of housing, the living that we wanted is vanishing. And if we keep going forward, it will. It'll end up being a subdivision or all trailer parks. Now, I did want to bring up too. Back when we was fixing the road and we was all asking the county to help us, the county wouldn't and we all fixed it up, put all our money and all into it. And there was a point I wanted to bring out. I can't quite grasp it in my mind right now. But we cannot handle any more traffic on that road. I oppose it and that's just how I feel.
I've got a question. Who actually owns the road?
We own to the middle of the road. It's a private...
Probably owner owns it.
Yes, we, we own to the center of the road. Now, I don't know if you could actually find the markings in that. There's so much, we've hauled so much dirt in there and scraped it with our tractors and... But we actually own to, each person owns to the middle of the road. From, uh, it'd be from the start of Haddon Lake Road all the way to the back. So, I oppose it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scherrhaus. Is there anyone else?
My name's Marty Edwards and I'm Jesse's father. And when my father bought the two tracts of land in there, I think it was in the late seventies, you know, we had no idea that any of us was wanting to move. But when I got the opportunity about eighty-five to live somewhere, he offered one of the six acre lots, so I, I built there. And then since then, my father gifted me the other six acres. And when, when Jesse needed a, wanted a place, my son stayed over there in a trailer for a while when he went to college. And, and so I gifted it to Jesse. And, you know, we sold the trailer and he built a house. And if he was going to do something, my wishes would be just, you know, if one of his boys needs some land to, you know, hold on to it and gift it to one of them and just keep what we, you know, keep doing, like handing land down.
I'm Suzanne Edwards and I am Jesse's mother. And I go along with what my husband said, but I also know that the lots in there were five acre, or six acre lots. And I know they want to go from AR one to AR two, which is under five. So, I was just trying to, I really wish that he wouldn't do this, but, and I, and I don't approve it, approve of it at all. But all the lots in that area are larger lots.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jason Winkler. I live at six thirty Haddon Lake Road and I'm opposing the rezoning for the same fact that Guy was. We got so much traffic on that road. I don't think that we need any new addresses added to it than what's already established. So, that's, that's my only argument for that.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against? Yes, sir. If you'll come back to the podium, if you'll come back to the microphone.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
You get a bit older, you forget it pretty easy. But I was just going to say too, when, if Jesse rezones and, and puts a house there, and I'm like, Marty, I have no objection to anybody in the immediate family building there. But when people, when they start selling and putting individual lots in there and then when me and the wife sell, because that's not the type of living I wanted to live next to, it sort of puts me in a position where I've got to do the same. Because people's not going to be looking, I mean, they, a lot of people like to type a seven, six, five acres living. And, and if it starts subdividing, the, the next person that sells has sort of got to subdivide too because people, you know, are not, they're looking for the five, six, seven acres of land. And then that, that's how I believe it all starts. And then when I go to sell mine, nobody wants to look it up because they say, yes, a nice lot, Guy, I, I like it, but I just didn't want to live next to, you know, three or four houses right there together. It's not quite what I'm looking for. So then I got the, you know, it sort of cuts me back on when I go to sell because I will if it gets like that. And then I've sort of got to sell, you know, lots like that. And I just, I think that's how it all gets started. I, I just want to say that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Scherrhaus. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Discussion, board, thoughts or comments?
How many, how many residences on that road? I know it's a private road undoubtedly, but...
Could I, could I get you to come back to the podium if you're going, whoever's going to answer that question? Just speaking to microphone, please, sir.
The question was how many people live on Haddon Lake Road? In the very back, in the field, there's, I think, five lots back there. And then going out on the, I guess it would be the north side, we have one, two. Deborah and her two children have homes out in Ron. On the other side, we have Marty, myself, Reagan Edwards, and Haps Bradley. So altogether, I think on that road is maybe, did you say twenty, twenty? How many? Fifteen or twenty?
No, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Fifteen, fifteen to eighteen. That's only established.
Twenty addresses on that road.
Right.
Twenty addresses on that road.
So you, you can honestly probably say that everybody's about a two-car family or more now. I mean, there's traffic on that road unbelievable. It, it really keeps us on the ball maintaining it. It really does. I think we've got all we can handle.
So is there a sixty-foot right-of-way road or what kind of right-of-ways there? You said you all own to the center line of the road, but I'm trying to understand.
Okay, we own, the Haddon Lake, Lake Road coming in, all of our land goes to the center of it. Across from me would be Deborah Moore. And her property and my property meet right in the middle of the road, just like everybody's does right on down.
It's pretty much a one...
Oh, yes.
It's a one, it's a, it's a two-rut road.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a one-way in and out.
Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out.
I mean, you can pass on it.
Right. You got to move out of the way though.
Yeah, you got to be careful.
Any further discussion? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, obviously you see the, the people who own the road or opposed to it. I mean, I, I don't...
I know where I am.
Anybody else have any discussion? All right. I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion for denial. Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
Second for denial. All those in favor of denial? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. This, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, this still will go before the county commissioners. Do we have a date on that meeting?
That will be the January third meeting.
January third. No, sir. Free to the public. Yes, sir. January third at six, January third at six PM. Item five is a public hearing for James Dasher. Request to rezon one point five acres from AR two to R one to allow for the separation of home sites located at one fifty Scoville Town Road. This is the second district.
Yes.
Ms. Donegan, Ms. Donegan, yes, ma'am.
So the, the applicant is requesting to basically divide this lot in half, to remove two current dwellings which are not in terrific condition and to replace them with new single-family dwellings. As you can see, this lot is kind of, oops, sorry, is kind of... It's kind of unique in that it ended up being sort of an island of AR two in between two R one subdivisions. So by splitting this lot and rebuilding one single-family home per new lot and rezoning to R one, he's actually bringing it into conformance with the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm James Dasher. I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you so much. It's just acre and I have, just shoving acre and I have, it has a single wide mobile home on it from the seventies and it has a very small home. We're going to remove those and put two, two new homes on it.
Questions, comments at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dasher. Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Christie Taylor and I've already signed in. I didn't even know that was on the docket, but my property backs up to that and I totally approve that. We hate that trailer and that little house. So, just so we're clear, our whole subdivision will approve that because we hate that property. We've always hated that property. I've been there since two thousand one. It is such an eyesore. They have random dogs there. They had a rooster that kept us up. We a hundred percent approve that. Like, I'm going to speak for my entire subdivision because that, my property backs up to that. And it's a nightmare. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against? Questions, comments at this time?
Is Mr. Dasher going to remove the rooster? We're going to have a big chicken and dumpling party.
There you go. There you go. I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion for approval. Anna, second. Mr. Higgins, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item six, a public hearing with Craig Conaway. Request a variance to waive the restriction that a private unpaved road may only serve three lots located off Blue Jay Roads on AR one, first district. Ms. Donegan?
So what the applicant is looking to do is subdivide this portion of the property, which is on the other side of this easement, separate from the existing mine. This is something that would usually be fairly simple, just signing a subdivision plat. But as you can see, it is private unpaved easement and it is serving more than three lots. Because of that, variance is required to allow for the subdivision to create a new lot. Staff is recommending approval.
So is he looking to build a home out there?
Correct. He's creating a home site.
Discussion at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Questions, comments from the board?
Where's the, uh, where's the easement to the, to that lot? I'm, I'm lost.
Zoom back out, Katie.
It comes out in the Blue Jay.
See it going up.
Oh. Okay. I see it.
Call, you good, Ryan?
Yeah, I'm just curious how this would have affected the last one we were just talking about a while back.
Haddon Lake Road? I mean, it's very similar except that, you know, the people who've, in my opinion, the people that have divided it aren't here saying that.
No, no, I'm just, like, we were zoning on that one. It wasn't a variance request is all I was trying to...
Oh, I see.
Plus, Craig and them have a pretty nice road going in, into theirs. It's not like Haddon Lake Road.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to...
Yeah, but Haddon Lake Road, I mean, I agree, being it's private, yeah.
Yeah, so if you see the two ponds that I just had, Craig Conaway, sorry. The two ponds we just had Doug, I had Tim and Doug Wordike redo my whole road from front to back. So it's sixty-foot. They put crush and run down the whole thing. So, it's nice. So, thank you.
Now, I get, I get what you're saying.
And you can pass both ways.
I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Go ahead and say it, yeah.
I want to recuse myself from public hearing number seven.
Uh, Mr. Thompson is recusing himself from item number seven. Item seven is a public hearing for Fetsor Lakes Development LLC as agent for Douglas. Winwood Boykin and Peggy Ann Boykin, Madal, Madal, yeah. Request to rezon one hundred and sixteen of one hundred and twenty-nine acres from AR one to PD Residential to allow for development of a single-family subdivision located on Hodgville Road. This is the second district. Ms. Donegan?
Hi, this, Teresa, planning manager, I'm going to handle this one. I've been meeting with the applicant and his representatives over time, so I'll take care of this one. So as you see, this is located on Hodgville Road at Earl Lane Road. And if you want to just slide through, Katie, to the site plan. Okay, so this is the proposed concept plan or master plan for the development. The rezoning requested is for planned development. And the difference there is that it's not a particular zoning district. There's no particular requirements to it. What it is, is you, you know, the applicants will often look at what our other requirements are. And then if they want to make some changes or, you know, customize it, they'll come in with a planned development. And that's what happened in this case. Plus, at the time, we had a moratorium on other types of zoning districts. So this became the obvious choice. This development is proposed to be a hundred and fifty-two unit, single-family subdivision that will straddle Earl Lane Road there. Proposal is to improve Earl Lane Road from the entrances to the subdivision back over to Hodgville Road. The applicant will have to run the water and sewer and reuse lines to the subdivision, to the proposed subdivision. They have included open space that meets the general requirements of our other zoning districts. So it's fitting right in there with our, with our, with our trends so far. And that would include the mail kiosk as well as, do we have? Yeah, you can sort of see it a little bit. There's the, the multipurpose ball fields. There's two. There's one on either side of Earl Lane Road and kind of on the top to the left and then over by the pond on the right-hand side. Let's see, what else here? So we've had several meetings. We've had a number of meetings with the applicant and their design team. And they've answered really all of our questions as far as meeting our utility requirements and meeting our ordinance requirements and then even, you know, going as far as discussing entrances and access to the road. So really, I can just answer any questions you might have at this point. But we're recommending approval at this point.
Questions, comments at this time from the board? I'm sorry. Well, everyone will have their opportunity to speak. Question, discussion at this time? Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I'm going to go from a hero to a zero, I believe. So, thank you so much. I'm James Dasher. I am the owner of Fetsor Lakes. Lived in Effingham County for the past forty-seven years. I'm a local real estate agent, real estate development broker. I did the Abbey, which is an all-brick neighborhood. Dashers Landing, which is also an all-brick neighborhood. Cobbleton on Ebenezer Road. So we've done some nicer homes and we've always tried to step it up. In two thousand and two, I was elected to my first of two terms to the Board of Education. And I recall many times during that eight-year stint of service, many people come into redistrict meetings suggesting that we close the gates on growth. We're full, is what they would all say. Now, tonight, twenty years later, many of those same people that moved here in the last twenty years will be here opposing future growth. And the reality is, we're a bedroom community to Savannah. Gulfstream, Georgia Ports, Hyundai, and many other local companies are growing, building, and setting production records every year. And they continue to grow and create new jobs. Their employees, most likely some of them will be here tonight to speak against this project, wants to live in our great community. Unfortunately, ten years ago in two thousand and twelve, we, the residents of Effingham County, voted against TSPLOS, the transportation tax paid by many outsiders through sales tax. Now today, we're ten years behind on infrastructure for our roads. Now we have TSPLOS. Our commissioners are working diligently to get these improvements in place. are working diligently to get these improvements in place. Now, let's talk about Wynwood Acres. With my previous developments, we have typically gone above and beyond what is required. As two of our three communities we've developed has been all brick. Although Wynwood Acres will not be all brick, it will be hardy board siding versus the common vinyl siding. Being we're developing a cotton field, we will also have a landscape requirement to create a buffer along Hodgsville Road. We will be planting trees along Hodgsville Road to not only get a better appearance from the street, but also a better buffer from the street for our community. Let me pause for a minute to say thank you to the Effingham County planning and zoning staff for working with us for the past year. We have literally worked on this project for a year, working on, through many obstacles, trying to make sure that we design a community that fit what currently exists in South Effingham today. Everything around there was previously developed pre-sewer, so it's a little bit larger lots than what we have. So what we've tried to do is step up our covenants, hardy board, landscape, and so forth to accommodate our surroundings. I understand that the crowd tonight will oppose our development. It will be said that our schools are full. Again, this has been being said for 20-plus years. It will be said that we have a traffic problem, and I agree, we do have a traffic problem each morning, each, each afternoon, Monday through Friday, for a couple of hours when our residents are commuting to and from work. Throw in a fender bender, and it's horrible. After the rush of two to three hours each day, Monday through Friday, traffic flows quite well, and you wait behind very few cars at a stop sign. Again, it is a commute problem that is burdensome for so many of our people. As stated earlier, we have worked with the planning and zoning staff for almost a year. We have waited on the moratorium. If Wynwood Acres gets approved in January of next year, I would expect that we are still two years away from a house on the ground at best. It will have taken us three years to get the first house completed, but approximately three to four additional years to build out the community. This will have taken us up to six-plus years to design and build the community in an area that the county commissioners designed for residential growth when they chose to serve this area and other, versus other parts of the county with water and sewer. We are being told by our county commissioners that by this time next year, we will have two roundabouts within approximately one mile north and one mile south of Wynwood Acres. Within a few months of the proposed first house on the ground in 2025, we will also have the Effingham Parkway in service. With these traffic improvements, we hope that the added homes will have minimal effect on the commute traffic in late fall of 2024 or in 2025 when we start seeing homes built. I have my engineer here, here with me tonight if I have any questions for myself or my engineer about the development itself.
Does he wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike Hughes of Thomas and Nutton. I just wanted to say one thing about the process of going through a PD. So as we're looking for a rezoning, what this enabled the county to do is actually work on the plan. We spent a year, and it allowed us to create a plan that, number one, puts access on a single point, if possible, unless the fire marshal dictates otherwise. Number two, it allowed us to work with the county to ensure that, to the best we could, the adjacent properties at Raven and, and other adjoining neighborhoods, White Bluff, had minimal impacts to adjacent neighbors. So I just want to put that out there. When you look at rezoning, what we did was conscientious of the neighborhoods. It was conscientious of traffic, limiting access, and then also the buffering requirements. I think we only have lots that back up against two homes. So otherwise, for a development this size, we are pretty well buffered from adjacent neighbors. But otherwise, I'll, I'll leave it open to questions that anyone may have. But we are using existing roadway for our access, as the primary access.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions at this time?
Do you have your bottom surveys?
Um, sir, sir, could you, the podium's open if you'd like to come on up.
Yeah, my name's James Thames. I'm one of the land buffers, and I was wondering if you had.
Mr. Thames, could I get you to speak in that microphone?
All right, yeah, I'll do it like this.
Ladies are trying to take.
Yeah, I was wondering if they had their environmental surveys. I'm interested in a good bit of water passes through the property there. The water that comes down, comes through the lane property and meets up, and the water that flows across Earl Lane and out through that bottom that runs parallel to my property. I'm concerned about backing water on my property.
So you're concerned about how they're going to handle that water flow?
How they're going to handle water.
Okay, sir. Any, do you have any other concerns, questions?
That's my major concern.
Okay, sir. Well, we'll give, we'll, we'll give them a minute shortly to try to address your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Thames. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Amy Neese, and I'm a resident of Scuffletown Road. So first off, I would like to thank you for approving the problem that Mr. Dasher is going to take care of on our road. That is an awesome news for us tonight. Second, I am in constant contact with Ann Purcell of the Department of Transportation, Roger Burdette, because Scuffletown Road has become a major traffic thoroughfare. I've lived there for 25 years. I was there. We talk about progress. I was there when it was a dirt road, and there was a beautiful field across the street, and White Bluff came along, Raven Estates came along, Lakewood, of course, is right behind us. So four subdivisions within a matter of 25 years. I was a prior resident of Pooleer, left Pooleer to come out to the bedroom community of Effingham for a less stressful way of life. We just had Scuffletown Road. Y'all just had it repaved. We now have traffic going down that road of probably 40 to 50 miles per hour, more than two or three hours a day. It's become a major area for kids to get to school. They cut through Scuffletown from Hodgsville to keep from going up to the Highway 30 Hodgsville intersection, which everyone in this room knows is an absolute nightmare. Ann Purcell has stated as of a month ago that there is no plans for that to be corrected before 2025, unless something has changed with the state of Georgia that I don't know about. Roger Burdette told me that there is plans for there to be a roundabout sometime in 2024, possibly 2025, but as he stated, if it's anything like the roundabout at Benton and Highway 30, it's not doing us a lot of good. So my main concern is, when you put 150 homes on Hodgsville, coming out to Hodgsville, if you look at the map, what is the easiest way for those people to get to Highway 30? And it's not Hodgsville, it's Scuffletown Road. So until something is done with Scuffletown Road and all the residents that live along there, and the three subdivisions, which I might add, a lot of these kids are waiting at school bus stops when the traffic is going by at 40 or 50 miles per hour, there needs to be no more subdivisions put on that road. On the way here tonight, we passed six subdivisions being built between Hodgsville, Blue Jay, and McCall. Six brand-new subdivisions that will all feed out going down Hodgsville Road. So I'm here to oppose any more approvals until we've called up with the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neese.
My name is Kristi Taylor. My daughter was a senior in high school this past year. She just graduated from South. I live also right beside Kevin and Amy, and it would take her 45 minutes to get to school. When she rode the bus, she was late over and over and over again, and I have the same, you know, I do appreciate him doing the houses on Scuffletown where that trailer is. I do appreciate that. But 300 more cars, which is average two families, we can't get out now. One day, it was so backed up on Scuffletown. I'm a nurse. I work at the hospital. Sometimes it takes me more than two hours to get to work. It's 22 miles, just so we're clear. It takes me between 90 minutes and two hours to get to work every single day. Some days, I can still see my house for 25 minutes. One day, I forgot my lunch. I put it in park on Scuffletown, walked to my house, got my lunch out, and came back and moved up two more feet. We, it's like Hotel California. You can come in, you can't leave. And then in the afternoons, you can't get back home. The roundabouts at Benton and 30 did zilch for us. They did not help us at all. We can't get out. And the people coming down Scuffletown, I called the school because my daughter's bus stop was at White Bluff Lane in Scuffletown. They had to move it because the guy who came out that runs the buses in Effingham almost got hit by a car at my daughter's bus stop when he came out. So luckily, she was able to start driving herself, but then it would take her 45 minutes. It's what, two and a half miles? And it would take her between 37 and 45 minutes to get to school. We can't handle it. She's right. Scuffletown backs up all the way down, and there's no way to get out. And we don't know what's going to happen with that many more houses. And traffic is a thing. I think about the emergency situations. My brother had a motorcycle wreck on Hodgsville. They, we could barely get the ambulance in because the house, the cars were dead stopped, and they could, they could barely get in to get him. So it's, it's dangerous. And until they do something with the traffic, which I understand you're saying it's a couple of years, but until it actually happens, we don't feel like we need something else. We're dying, and I've been there 21 years, and I've never come to a meeting to oppose any kind of development. Like I said, the thing on Hodgsville, great, but we can't get out, and it's, it's a huge problem. It really is. I've called the Georgia State Patrol and the police to come clock people in the mornings, and they are giving tickets left and right. There are all kinds of people coming from Rankin, coming up Goshen to cut through Scuffletown to get to work. I understand. It's a dead standstill everywhere else, but until some of the traffic's fixed, what are we supposed to do? And, I mean, I, I can't leave more than two hours early to go to work to be on time, because I have patients at 7:30. So, I mean, what do we do? So, but I thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Hello, my name is Darden Hudson, and one neighborhood we failed to mention was Southern, where I live, which is directly across the street of Hodgsville from the cotton field. And I have a one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood, which there are times when I'm trying to make a left-hand turn, and I'm waiting for the parade to stop because I can't get out. And then, like the other lady said, I worked in the medical field. I leave at 5:30 to be at a job by 7:00, and that's on a good day. And you don't want to have to get up any earlier than you have to, to go to work and work a 12-hour shift. So the traffic is bad, and I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Until we figure out the infrastructure of the roads and the schools, et cetera, we can't add more houses on our road. There's just too many cars and too many houses as it stands right now. So I do suggest, once we figure out the road situation and the traffic is better, then we can add some neighborhoods. That's all I have to say. So I do oppose it.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening. My name's Arlene Manuel, and I would just like to say that I concur total agreement with the previous people who have spoken. I live in Raven Estates currently, and I have grave concerns. I am vehemently opposed to this project. I think it's going to be a disaster for a number of reasons. And again, with respect to traffic, I don't want to keep repeating, but it's a nightmare. I take my grandson to karate periodically, and I have to come down Goshen. I mean, are there any plans to put a traffic light there? Because I can't take a left to get back to my development, and there's accidents all the time. It's getting worse and worse. And I understand the schools have been mentioned some years ago, but it's going to put a strain on the schools ultimately. Maybe not tomorrow, but it will, with the addition of all these residential homes. Services will need to be increased, so taxes are going to be affected, and I feel that our property values are going to go down in light of this, because this is not, and I've only lived here for four years, but this is not the place I moved to, and I'm very disappointed to see the increased growth. And frankly, I think this is a terrible idea, just for the record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Manuel.
That was my boss.
Hi, my name is Louis Manuel. I live at Raven Estate. My main concern is, you talked about putting up trees and, you know, ballparks, but nobody talks about the traffic. Scuffletown Hodgsville is like a magnet. Everybody comes in that way. And, you know, Scuffletown now is worse than Hodgsville, because all the traffic is coming in there. Everybody's going to work either Hodgsville, Scuffletown, and then the buses. My grandson has to go to school. Their bus is always late, or they always get cut up in the traffic. The main thing with me is, is all that extra traffic. We put in 300 houses, I mean, you're going to have 300 drivers extra going towards Scuffletown or Hodgsville, so I'm against it because of all the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Clay Carpenter. I live in Lakewood subdivision, and my wife and I have been there since 2003. I remember back, I moved up here in Effingham in 1970, and I remember when Hodgsville was dirt, and it was all a dairy farm over there where all these houses are now. And the thing that concerns me, like they said, is the Scuffletown Road, you know, the backing up traffic. I've seen Highway 30 backed up from the roundabout all the way to where Colic Helmy dumps out on Highway 30. They was backed up on Colic Helmy all the way from there, almost back to Hodgsville, and it's just gone crazy. I mean, my wife and I were sitting in our house the other morning, and I reckon the people, it was, they couldn't get out on the Scuffletown. They couldn't get on Hodgsville, so they were coming through Lakewood. I mean, it looked like, almost like 95. I mean, they were coming through there at high rates of speed, and I mean, there's people in the morning that get out and walk. You know, they walk their dogs, you know, they're joggers in the morning through our neighborhood. And, I mean, that's one of the reasons my wife and I moved there and built a custom house in 2003, was because it was country then, which now it's not much country no more. And it's just become a concern, you know, for the, mainly the safety aspect, and also the, you know, the infrastructure, like everybody says, you know, get the roads right. I mean, you know, we put in a roundabout, and everybody's jumping up and down, hooting and hollering, you know, but that's not the answer, I don't think. But, and then on down Hodgsville, the Truitt Tree Farm, Christmas Tree Farm, I know something's going on down there. They sold that. It's either houses or warehouse. I'm not sure yet. And then, like I said, on down, on Blue Jay, where Hodgsville dumps out on Blue Jay, they're putting a subdivision right there. So where are all they going? They're going to come down that way. There's, there's something going on at the end of Hodgsville and Blue Jay Road, right?
Not a subdivision.
No, it's just. What is it? A warehouse?
It's just a dirt pit.
A dirt pit, okay. Then that's more, more dump trucks. And that's another concern.
Temporary for the, for the, for the road.
I mean, that's, that's another concern, is the dump trucks. But it's just, it's just become a safety problem, you know. You know, I know y'all have heard all that, and that's what I got to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
I might be just reiterating something the same, but I'm Eddie Horn. I live at 285 Scuffletown Expressway. Like we said earlier, honestly, if you looked, I've been there 25 years. If you tried to look for a place in Effingham County to put a subdivision, you couldn't find a worse place right now to put one. I mean, I, I go all kind of ways to try to get to work, and it's, it's really bad. I can't get out of my driveway on Scuffletown Road, and that's been the last few months. So all the growth, and we didn't even mention the growth on Highway 30. Everything flows from Hodgsville down to Scuffletown, Pecan, to try to get on 30, and it is a disaster trying to get on Highway 30. And it's, you're putting your life in your hands, it seems like, trying to get out on the road oftentimes. You have to rely on somebody trying to be courteous and let you onto the highway. So I, I oppose it, but I would say at the very minimum, I would request something of you guys. If you haven't experienced it, between maybe six and eight, I go between six and seven, to go down that way, try to go down Hodgsville, try to go down Scuffletown, and by goodness, hopefully, there's not a wreck on 21, because you won't even get there. But I, just, just get a feel for it yourself, and you, you'll kind of get an idea just how bad it is, and how adding these houses could just exacerbate the problem. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Good evening. My name is Mike Patton. I live at 120 Forest Haven Drive, on the very corner of Forest Haven and Hodgsville. I'm the newbie here in Effingham County. I hear that one. I hear that all these people here have been, been living here several years. I've been living there two years. Granted, when I moved on that property, already knew about the Parkway coming on at the other end. Uh, I think we got in a losing battle on trying to make that a cul-de-sac. But now, I think everybody knows Forest Haven Drive is gonna come through a way, just like Scuffletown Road. This past week, we've noticed an overload of surveyors right there at the corner. Those surveyors, eh, they can't answer any questions. They don't know if it's a turnabout going right there or turn lanes. Either way, if it's a, a turn lane, likes down on, uh, Goshen and Hodgsville, um, just in the short time I've been living there, there's been some horrible wrecks there in the past two years. I'm opposing this subdivision because it's gonna add to the problems we have. This battle that we've had going on in Forest Haven is gonna make things even worse. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm, I am for the growth of Effingham County. And let's face it, hey, it, it's more tax dollars coming into our community. But I believe as big as Effingham County is, with respect to y'all, I think there's plenty of other area they can put the subdivision and get the same amount of tax dollars. But, um, everybody in here is exactly right. I've been involved, and I'm still currently involved. For the past thirty years, I've been in emergency services. I'm a former deputy fire chief of Poole. I love Poole to come out here. I still own a private ambulance service in Chatham County. Y'all creating a mess with this. And, um, there, there was brought up that, you know, we, they're gonna tie in, uh, Forest Haven to the Parkway to help with emergency vehicles. It's not gonna make a difference. That was just an excuse to, to fight us on that end. Now I got, I'm, I'm gonna have a battle on this end, it looks like. So I, I understand that, wha, what's going on on both sides. But the priority is, is the, the safety of y'all's constituents. And until this traffic problem is resolved in Effingham County, y'all need to slow down a little bit. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Hi, gentlemen. I bring a little bit different perspective. My phone number on this here list is the only one that starts with seven-seven-oh. I moved here in two thousand and seven. And prior to that, I lived twelve years in Gwinnett County. And I watched exactly what's going on in Effingham happened to Gwinnett. We watched one neighborhood after another be put on two-lane roads. We watched one neighborhood after another lose value because the next neighborhood was smaller houses, cheaper houses. We watched, my house isn't even close to where this is going in. My four-sided brick house is on the other side. But I'm, no offense, but they're putting handy houses in a neighborhood. Nobody's talking about the shootings at Walmart here recently that's just started in the last couple of years. When I moved here, you didn't even ha, you could leave your doors open. And nowadays, we got people from Chatham County driving through our neighborhood, going through cars that are unlocked. We've got traffic out the wazoo. I'm sitting here watching Effingham do exactly the same stupid things that Gwinnett did. And my wife and I go back to see family, those roads are still two-lane, twenty years later. Twenty years, and they have not expanded a single road. Yeah, the schools are overloaded. They were overloaded when we moved here in two thousand and seven. They're still overloaded. And they're gonna be overloaded. Everybody's selling out and all you, you have neighborhood after neighborhood. And I'm, eh, I'm not against the growth because it's coming, one way or the other. It's gonna happen. The things that do bug me is that you've already had one member that had to excuse himself. You're standing here looking at a tidal wave that's headed to you from Chatham County. And both warehouses, housing, and people. We've got people moving from up north. I see Pennsylvania tags, New York tags. Everybody's coming this way. We understand that. It's gonna happen. But we have to do it smart. We have to keep our property values up. They wanna come to Effingham, I'm all for it. But make them step up to Effingham. Let's not step down to their level. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wish? Yes, ma'am.
Janelle Morris. I also live on Scuffletown and I could reiterate everything you've already heard. I used to give directions to my house. I've been there a little longer. I was the fir, after you turned on Scuffletown, it was dirt and I was the first house on the left. Now there are the Lakewood subdivision, the White Bluff subdivision, the Raven Estates is straight across from my property. And frankly, we're, we're just boxed in. Fortunately, I am retired. My husband and I plan our day according to the traffic. We don't leave the house until after nine or nine-thirty. And we do our best to be home before three-thirty. And that's our window. Because any, anytime before that, it's bumper to bumper on Scuffletown, we can't get out our driveway. And coming back home, if you're on Goshen, coming from Rinkin, you back up to where, almost to where the Effingham Expressway is coming through there a few times. I've stopped there to try to get through the Goshen Hodgsville to turn left, which seems takes you forever once you're there sitting and waiting. I confess, I've turned right, gone down the road, pulled into a subdivision and come back through in order to basically accomplish a left turn lane onto Hodgsville. The area is too, has too many people now, too much traffic now. People use it from all over the county trying to avoid twenty-one. And that's what brought it all down to an area little area. Scuffletown's improved wonderful. But now we have speed demons on the road. I just oppose another hundred and fifty, however many homes right there with, like we said, all the cars that would be with it. Maybe lower density would be an improvement if we can't fight, uh, progress. But why do we need so many more homes before the infrastructure is prepared to handle the load? And we're way behind on infrastructure fixes, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Kevin Neese. Just wanna get my name up here as an opposer. Uh, I don't have the problem these folks have, but I do live on Scuffletown Road. But I get to work at home every day. So I get to see this S show. Cause that's what it is. It's ridiculous. And I try to walk and it's just a, um, you, you gotta be careful because there's so many cars. And it starts usually about six o'clock. And some mornings, I, I, I look out there and it's just, I mean, I'm trying to think of something that I can sell to these people. Cause I could be rich, just standing there selling something. I don't know what it is, but it's that many cars. It's unbelievable. Now, because I work at home, it's not the traffic congestion's in the morning and the afternoon, but it's traffic all day long. It is a freeway. And also, I will tell you that I guess our police are at capacity because I've called the sheriff on many occasions and begged him to come out there and said, "You can sit in my driveway" and catch him coming around the corner. Cause at four o'clock or whenever they get out of school, they're fricking going sixty-five miles an hour. And some clown, I don't know what engineer staff did it, but the clowns that came in and paved that road widened it and put fricking passing lanes on Scuffletown Road that is twenty-five mile an hour zone. Well, let me tell you, brother, they are passing on Scuffletown Road going sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. Alan, I know you live right around the corner, but like somebody said earlier, I invite you to not to go to work one morning and come see me. Come to my house and drink coffee with me and give it a try. Cause it's crazy, guys. And I respect these guys for, you know, trying to make, you know, make a living. And he's a real estate agent. He wants to sell homes. He owns the land. He's gonna build homes. I get it. But the problem we have, like everybody said, and I can't say it any better, is Effingham is asleep at the wheel when it comes to development of infrastructure. Trying to catch up, but y'all way, way, way behind eight ball. And until you guys get your act together up here, obviously you got enough tax money to build freeways, but you're not. You're just approving more and more subdivisions that is causing a catastrophe of traffic. And anyway, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, has anything to add? Yes, sir, Mr. Dascher.
I appreciate y'all coming out and, uh,
Uh, Ja, James, can you speak in?
Okay.
Thank you.
The people sitting behind me, I appreciate y'all coming out so much. I appreciate you being so cordial tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a concern. I've set it, that stop sign myself. And, uh, it's, it's a problem over there. And I hope that, uh, with the ten late, ten-year delay in T-Splas approval, I hope that we can catch up to this problem. But I do wanna say one last thing, Mr. Burns. Our problem is not South Effingham. Our problem is Highway twenty-one and Highway thirty. And if you build a neighborhood in Springfield, or if you build a neighborhood on Hodgsville Road, all the traffic comes to the same stop signs. And that, and that's what I've tried to get across to the commissioners. All the traffic come to the same stop signs. They may drive ten miles to get to the stop sign at Scuffletown, or they may drive a half a mile to get to that stop sign. But they all come to the same stop sign. Thank y'all so much for coming out tonight and being so cordial. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you at least address the, the water flow question? The first question from Mr. Thane?
Sure. Again, Mike Hughes with Thomas and Nudden. Yeah, I'll, I'll handle the easy ones. So the environmental permitting, we do have a wetland delineation. So we do know where the wetlands are. And as we widen the roadway, we will be required to dedicate sixty-foot right of way and we will have to make sure passage of water goes beneath Earl Lane Road. So that drainage shouldn't be an issue. Again, it, it is a fairly large amount of wetlands on the property.
Do you have meets and bounds? Or is that on the wetlands?
Uh, we have it described, but we have to go out and actually get a, a wetland or a Army Corps of Engineers permit for it. So in terms of the actual delineation, that would typically happen during the development permit process. So, um, the Army Corps of Engineers will be out to do that, um, in the next step of the process. And it will require, I will say, it will require impacts to the wetlands to widen Earl Lane Road. So there will be a wetland permit that will be necessary to cross into both neighborhoods and also to widen the roadway and dedicate the sixty-foot of right of way. And the only other thing I wanna say is that, again, as part of this process, that, I heard handy house. The quality of the homes and the facade and the frontage, all these things were basically, as part of the PD, agreed to, to be high-quality materials. The sizing of the lots are seventy-foot wide, uh, on average. So it's not that we have excessively small properties. But I think what's important is quality of materials have been specified and are required within the neighborhood. So this is not gonna be a low qua, low-quality neighborhood. And the county made sure of that and the planning staff made sure that was part of this application with the PD.
Thank you, Ms. Neese.
I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch. You had not done your meets and bounds on your wetlands yet. That's part of the process. All coming?
Correct. So the we, a wetland scientist has been on property, uh, and has done a delineation of the wetlands. However, to go through the actual process to get the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to delineate and verify the wetlands, we have to submit the meets and bounds to them in order for them to certify or verify where the wetlands are.
Okay, then you're gonna put it on the draw?
Yes, sir. The, the, what we have right now, that's shown this lighter color, are the wetlands that were done by the wetland scientist. So you can see all these areas and then we also have represented buffers, represented buffers on those wetlands as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Neese.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll close public comment. Questions, comments to the board, discussion?
Some great points brought up and the, the, the big thing is traffic.
So I'm, this is the first time I've come to oppose anything like this. So I'm just really not sure of how the process works. So your summary recommendation that I got off the website, it says under here that all traffic impact assessments shall be submitted during the development plan review process. At what point do we see the traffic impact assessment done? Would that be something that's done, like he said, with the environmental? Is it gonna be something during the review process? Okay.
Yeah, so rezoning, as a first step, rezoning, um, is generally, we don't generally require a great deal of outlay. I mean, in this case, we do have the concept plan because the plan development does require slightly more advanced. It requires a concept plan or a master plan. So we did ask for a lot of details to be included. Assuming the rezoning is successful, the next step would be, uh, depending on how detailed this is, we may or may not require a sketch plan. And that's really just another level of review that may or may not be required. This may be enough. After that, the land development, uh, the land clearing permit would be applied for. And again, we, we may or may not requi, eh, it, it would certainly start showing up as a condition there that we get the traffic impact assessment certainly before the final permit. I mean, land clearing may happen. Again, it depends. Some developers wanna get in there and get the trees out, get the land clear, eh, get the, their silt feds up, get the wetlands, you know, marked off. But the final review is the development plan review. And that is, there will be no permit issued until we have the traffic impact assessment. In fact, it would be necessary so that we can verify the proposed road widening or the, or the turn lanes and, and what, you know, what improvements may be necessary at the intersection of Earl Lane and Hodgsville Roads. In fact, we've pushed back and, not pushed back, we have not, at this time, permitted any discussion of, uh, an entrance onto Hodgsville other than Earl Lane simply because of congestion issues. So the, 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 the move to improve Earl Lane benefits both the county, but also provides, you know, that, that stacking area for cars coming out of this, you know, going towards Hodgsville. The traffic impact assessment would be looking at the intersection, any needed improvement and whether, you know, any, um, any, any lane changes would, any lane improvements would be needed there. So that would come during the development plan review process, which, assuming a kind of a normal timeline, assuming, we'll say that the rezoning is approved, assuming we, we can skip the sketch plan because this is detailed enough. If we go into LDA, this is, you know, into next year. And as, as Mr. Dascher said, that we're, we're into next year, depending on how quickly plans come in and, and, and comments are, are responded to. So this, you know, it does take time. But the Corps of Engineers delineation, that also takes time. That's another requirement. We would not be issuing any permits till we have Corps of Engineers approval, till we have a, what, the, the traffic impact assessment. And the, all the stormwater generated by the side ore that is, that is generated onsite can't leave the side and that will be looked at during our engineers' review of all of the plans. So we do take it carefully. And, and as a rezoning review, you know, we do look at, all we can look at is ordinance requirements. So we're, we're looking at it in, in kind of a, a bubble that does this, generally speaking, meet our ordinance requirement. And as we've all indicated, we've met several times, we've talked about this. It's meeting the ordinance requirements. As to whether it meets community requirements, that's a discussion for this board and the other, and the Board of Commissioners.
Um, and so to make sure I understand, will there be any public meetings after the traffic assessment plan is done? Or that'll be something handled in-house at that point? That's a staff thing? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question. So, am I to understand that if it is approved for rezoning to de, tonight, then all these other steps with Corps of Engineers and so forth will continue to go on? And what if they disapprove it? Then all of a sudden, this property has been rezoned from AR-one to residential?
Okay, so
And sit like that?
Tonight's vote is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And on January third, they will determine the next step. They can either approve it, they can table it, they could deny it. That's generally what they, their options. After that, if the applicant After that, if the applicant, you know, and his engineers come back with the land clearing, the LDA, the land disturbance activity permit, at that point, you know, I'm assuming they're moving ahead then with the, with the Corps of Engineers. I don't know that the Corps of Engineers would deny. I mean, it's, all they're doing is verifying the, the existing wetland survey. So, that's the delineation. So, they verify. I mean, that's really how...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be bigger. It'll be larger or smaller. I mean, it may, it may vary a little bit, but, I mean...
Right. So, it's not a case of deny or prove, it's more a case of truth it, they ground-truth it. And so, it may, it may result in, yes, it may possibly result in revisions, which, depending on how significant they are, we might approve at a staff level, or we might take back to the board and say, whoa, this is completely different. But any revisions...
But it sounds like if it's rezoned, that no matter what kind of limitations any kind of wetlands might put on it, you're still gonna put a neighborhood there. It sounds like.
If it's rezoned, then we are rezoning it for, his request is for a neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Correct. So, yes, if it's rezoned, not tonight, but at the Board of Commissioners, at the Board of Commissioners level, because to change a zoning, it has to have three, three public hearings?
Two public hearings.
Two public hearings. So, there'll be another public hearing by the Commissioners, who are elected officials. We're just appointed. So, ours is a recommendation to them. Theirs will be the final decision. If they give it a, a thumbs up, then yes, his plan is to make it a residential subdivision.
And may I suggest that the signage outside, I, I've been waiting for a sign to come up to tell us about this meeting, because I saw it in Effingham Herald. And today was the first time I noticed the little orange sign at the far north end of the property, which I had to turn my car around, stop, get out and read it, because it's so small, and the sun was shining on it. So, I think a bigger sign needs to be posted. And I know, I was told that people that live within two hundred yards of the property were sent a notice in the mail. Well, in my neighborhood, I'm not the first row. I'm the fourth row. So, I'm not gonna get a notice, because I'm much farther away. So, I think everybody in those neighborhoods should get another notice when you have another meeting. Thank you.
Our ordinance requires two, notification of any property owner within two hundred feet of the subject property.
See, that's not like anybody.
That's what our...
Those are the rules that were handed. So, eh, I'm, ma'am.
The sign was bigger, maybe people were...
I'm, once again, I'm gonna close public comment, discussion for the board.
As I was saying, I think the, the point that stands out strongest to me is the congestion of the highways. And I'm appalled at, of, of this Scuffletown Road passing zone. And I think that's something Ms. Purcell should be made aware of. Maybe the county commission, they'll hear it at the next meeting. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote for denial.
I mean, I'm, I've had a hard time with this one since it came up, because I, I've already known about the congestion over there. And I, I can't help but agree that not a lot has been done. It's been basically the same road for a long time. And it's been a little bit disappointing, but, you know, and, and I feel sorry for landowners who are the last one to develop. I mean, it's, seems like that's not fair, because they waited. Everybody else has already grown up around them, and now we're gonna say, oh, it's overloaded. Too bad for you. I mean, that's a, that's a hard pill to swallow as a landowner. But I, I am very concerned about this amount of density, and I can't, I mean, I too can't help but see what everybody's saying. And, and, and I want to say, I mean, a lot of these meetings get very controversial, and, and we get yelled at a lot. And it gets very frustrating. But, but as Mr. Dasher said, I mean, I appreciate, you know, how everyone's conducted themselves. And, 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 and I really haven't heard anyone say, I don't want any more growth, or I don't want another subdivision. They basically, everyone has said, we know it's coming, but we would like to see some, some things get fixed before it happens, because there is no doubt this piece of property is going to be developed at some point in the future, whether it's now or later, I don't know. But, I mean, it, it's, it's just a fact of Effingham County. So, that's, that's my two cents.
And I'll say, I travel that road every day. I got a business on it, and, and I travel it every single day, and I know what these folks are saying is true. I had to go to Pula this morning, and it took me fifty-seven minutes from Scuffletown Road to Highway thirty, to get on Highway thirty. I knew this meeting was coming up, so I looked at my watch. It was fifty-seven minutes. And so, a trip that should've took five. And so, I understand what you're saying, and my, my concern is not that I'm opposed
ninety point ninety acres from AR1 to I1 to allow for a GDOT approved borough source
to development, because I am pro-development. But I'm also pro-safety of the constituents, of our, our taxpayers.
pit located eight thirty-five Horsepin Road and eighteen eighty-six Blue Jay Road, and
And so, therefore, I, I would vote to deny as well.
it's the fourth district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant has already been approved for an eight point nine six acre
All right, well, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny.
Motion for denial. Is there a second? There's a second, Mr. Higgins.
borough site through the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Oh, there's in favor of denial. Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
So, he's making it official.
Once again, this is merely a recommendation based on planning and zoning.
This dirt will be used for the Effingham Parkway, and staff is recommending approval.
County Commissioners will make the final decision. Let's take a brief recess. All right, thank you, ma'am.
And the applicant submitted this request prior to the I1 moratorium.
Okay. Good evening.
I'm running supper, I own the property. I'm asking y'all to shovel this down so that we can help all these people get this parkway built quicker. Let them start hauling dirt tomorrow.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. Questions, comments at this time?
Got one question. A gentleman asked me, when it's over, you are planning on zoning it back to AR, agricultural? Yeah. It will be a separate section. Right. That's what I told him I thought he was gonna do, but I'd rather him hear it from you. Thank you.
Anything further? Does anyone else wish to speak, either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
I was in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Ryan, do you have, do you have a comment? Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'll recuse myself from this item.
Excuses himself from item number nine. Thank you, Mr. Zipper. Sketch plan for Chance Rand, his agent for SFG and GITC West LLC, requests approval of his sketch plan for Georgia International Trade Center West, located on Hodgville Road. This is second district. Miss Concanon?
Uh, these parcels, because there's a total of four, have been rezoned over the course of the last year and a half or so to industrial. And the last rezoning, in fact, was the parcels that are most to the southeast. And that rezoning included a discussion of buffers and an approval of a reduction or a change in our buffer requirements. And that's all reflected on the sketch plan. So, what we'll see instead is buffers that include a berm, so that protects the neighboring subdivision, Jamestown, from sound effects. And the whole idea was to just minimize disruptions to adjacent residential developments where possible. The, if we had a, do we have a zoning? Let's see, we do have a zoning layer. As you pull back, you see that there is, in fact, a good deal of industrial to the north in the OmniTrak site. So, this was considered, you know, an obvious extension of that development. The sketch plan shows a construction exit, entrance from Hodgville, but will only use during the construction phase. This development is proposed to build out and open onto the Effingham Parkway. So, the only entrance for trucks, once it begins operating, will be onto the Effingham Parkway. And in fact, the engineers, we've provided GDOT contacts to the engineers for this site to make sure that they're, they're coordinating at an early stage, to make sure that the build, the construction goes along at the same time, or at least is in coordination. So, the sketch plan includes everything that was approved so far during the rezoning and variance hearings and appro- during the process for the, for the variance, as I said. And we have had meetings subsequent to that to discuss water and sewer and reuse lines. So, everything at this point has been agreed upon by the county and the developers' representatives. So, staff are recommending approval of the sketch plan.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time? Mr. Rand, do you have anything you wish to add?
Good evening. Chance Rand with Chesterfield. I think Teresa did a wonderful job explaining the project. I'm here just for any questions or comments.
So, as Ms. Teresa said, I mean, truck traffic only be allowed on the parkway. I mean, to begin construction, there may be some traffic on Hodgville. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, and I appreciate that clarification. The construction access up at Hodgville is purely for construction traffic until the parkway is completed. Once the parkway is completed, not only will the business truck traffic only access the parkway, but also the business car traffic. So, once the business is open, they will not access Hodgville Road. It'll be all on Effingham Parkway.
You mean, as far as construction?
And the parkway opening. How long are they gonna be coming back to Hodgville?
Do you?
I mean, I guess you're early in the plans now, engineering.
That's correct.
So, you're probably a year out on engineering?
Uh, we're probably six to nine months out on engineering and, and bidding and the whole pre-construction process. And then the, my understanding is the parkway completion is set for early twenty-five, first quarter of twenty-five perhaps?
So, we have eighteen months of traffic on Hodgville from construction?
Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Nothing further from the board, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, I was in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item ten was postponed. Item eleven is a public hearing for Jay Maupin, his agent for, is that one on here?
Ten is still on. It was postponed at the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ten is current. Ten is a public hearing for Oleg Mitnik, requests to rezone nine point seven of fourteen point nine nine acres from B3 to I1 to allow for the expansion of adjacent industrial use located on Highway twenty-one. This is the fifth district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant is requesting to rezone nine point seven of just under fifteen acres from B3 to I1 to join up with these existing industri- excuse me, industrial lots to expand his operations. He did a similar such rezoning right about over here, was approved from B3 to I1. Staff is recommending approval. The next item on the agenda is going to be a variance for buffers for the site.
The, the representative of Jay Maupin, who, who's the engineer for this, is traveling back from Florida, and we no longer have a Zoom option. So, I assured him that we should be able to answer any questions you might have, because I think we have, we have all the answers.
What is the property north of that?
Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Ryan, do you have, do you have a comment? Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I'll recuse myself from this item.
Excuses himself from item number nine. Thank you, Mr. Zipper. Sketch plan for Chance Rand is agent for S F G. And G I T C West LLC requests approval of his sketch plan for Georgia International Trade Center West located on Hodgsville Road. This is second district. Ms. Conklin.
These parcels, because there's a total of four, have been rezoned over the course of the last year and a half or so to industrial and. The last rezoning in fact was the parcels that are most to the southeast and that rezoning included a discussion of buffers and an approval of a reduction or a change in our buffer requirements. And that's all reflected on the sketch plan. So what we'll see instead is buffers that include a berm so that protects the neighboring subdivision Jamestown from sound effects. And the whole idea was to just minimize disruptions to adjacent residential developments where possible. The if we had a, do we have a zoning, let's see, we do have a zoning layer. As you pull back, you see that there is in fact a good deal of industrial to the north in the Omni Track site. So this was considered, you know, an obvious extension of that development. The sketch plan shows a construction exit entrance from Hodgsville, but will only use during the construction phase. This development is proposed to build out and open onto the Effingham Parkway. So the only entrance for trucks, once it begins operating, will be onto the Effingham Parkway. And in fact, the engineers, we've provided G dot contacts to the engineers for this site to make sure that they're coordinating at an early stage to make sure that the bill, the construction goes along at the same time, or at least is in coordination. So the sketch plan includes everything that was approved so far during the rezoning and variance hearings and. During the process for the, for the variance, as I said, and we have had meetings subsequent to that to discuss water and sewer and reuse lines. So everything at this point has been agreed upon by the county and the developers representatives. So staff are recommending approval of the sketch plan.
All right, thank you ma'am. Questions, comments at this time. Mr. Rand, do you have anything you wish to add?
Good evening. Chance Rand with Chesterfield. I think Teresa did a wonderful job explaining the project. I'm here just for any questions or comments.
So as Ms. Teresa said, I mean, truck traffic. Only be allowed on the parkway. I mean, to begin construction, there may be some traffic on Hodgsville. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I appreciate that clarification. The construction access off of Hodgsville is purely for construction traffic until the parkway is completed. Once the parkway is completed, not only will the business truck traffic only access the parkway, but also the business car traffic. So once the business is open, they will not access Hodgsville Road. It'll be all on Effingham Parkway.
You mean as far as construction?
And the parkway opening. How long are they gonna be coming back into Hodgsville?
Do you? I mean, I guess you're early in the plans now, engineering.
That's correct.
So you probably a year out on engineering?
We're probably six to nine months out on engineering and bidding and the whole pre-construction process. And then the, my understanding is the parkway completion is set for early twenty-five, first quarter of twenty-five perhaps.
So we have eighteen months of traffic on Hodgsville from construction?
That's correct.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Nothing further from the board, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. I was in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item ten was postponed. Item eleven is a public hearing for Jay Mopin as agent for, is that one on here?
Ten is still on. It was postponed at the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ten is.
Current.
Ten is a public hearing for Oleg Mitnik requests to rezone nine point seven of fourteen point nine nine acres from B three to I one to allow for the expansion of adjacent industrial use located on highway twenty-one. This is the fifth district. Ms. Donegan.
Yes, the applicant is requesting to rezone. Nine point seven of just under fifteen acres from B three to I one to join up with these existing. Excuse me, industrial lots to expand his operations. He did a similar such rezoning right about over here, was approved from B three to I one. Staff is recommending approval. The next item on the agenda is going to be a variance for buffers for the site.
The representative of Jay Mopin, who's the engineer for this, is traveling back from Florida and we no longer have a Zoom option. So I assured him that we should be able to answer any questions you might have, because I think we have, we have all the answers.
What is the property north of that that's on the, on the second portion of the. Where he wants the variance changed. Is that industrial on that side? Because I know industrial to industrial is.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, the variance is.
But the other is B three, isn't it?
Do you want to hear these together, Mr. Chairman? The variance and the rezoning?
I mean, yes. I mean, I don't mind if we discuss both of them at the same time.
Let's do that. Okay. So, yes, so for the variance, what we have going on here is this little strip right here belongs to the county. It is technically AR one, but it is basically just an easement. For which they wish to eliminate the buffer. A lot of the properties already against. That little access easement, there, there's no buffer to speak of whatsoever. He wishes to eliminate. The buffer, the internal buffer between what he's rezoning to industrial and the existing export business. And also this little strip up north here to an adjacent industrial property. Does that make sense?
What about the adjacent property? What'd you say of that part?
Wishes to eliminate the buffer right here from his proposed industrial to the neighboring proposed industrial.
What's the reason?
Because it's industrial to industrial, and he wants to eliminate the buffer.
And then it goes up against well.
Isn't it, isn't it?
Is that what, is that basically essentially what you said?
That is essentially the case.
By B three, it says. A parcel is boarded by I one and B three zoned properties.
Can you put the zoning map back up there? So the blue, the blue is.
Commercial.
Commercial B three.
Yeah.
So he's, that's the north side, correct? He's boarding commercial on that side.
Yeah, those are small warehouses.
Right.
And he wants to reduce that from.
Those are the, that's the commercial part that, that uses Goshen.
Road extension, that's correct.
Yeah, Goshen Road extension, choo-choo that road at the end of it.
Some warehouses in there, I think.
Down there.
Yeah.
So what, I can't read that label. What is that, what he's proposing?
That, that is a twenty-five foot buffer right there.
And then it's fifty on the south to that B three?
Correct.
And that buffer's on the other side of the property line?
He, it's the same owner.
Yes.
So he's saying the buffer's gonna be placed on the commercial lot and not on the industrial? I just want to be clear about what we're approving.
There's gonna be, he's proposing a fifty-foot buffer between the two properties and because of wetlands, can, do we have the exhibit with wetlands? Because of their wetlands exhibit?
Hold on just a moment, I will pull up.
They're limited quite a bit as to where they can do development. And if you look at the staff report, actually, staff are pushing back a little bit and recommending that a minimum fifty-foot buffer be maintained between commercial and industrial. So the western kind of line and the southern line to keep that fifty and fifty. At the Board of Commissioners, Jay Mopin will be attending that meeting and he will then be able to have his exhibits and show exactly why he's proposing a smaller buffer. But it really is to do with wetlands coverage. The wetlands, national wetlands inventory doesn't actually show wetlands on the site, which is extraordinary because usually that shows more wetlands than, than exists on the ground. But their own onsite inspection has, has shown quite a bit of wetlands coverage. So he's fairly constrained as to, as to how they can expand the car export operations over from Effingham Park of Commerce in and then do the commercial development on twenty-one. At the lower part of the Dickey tract.
So. What has been the, I guess there's no one to speak either in favor or against us. What has been the. I don't know, the take or, you know, any issues with this business? I mean.
We've had no complaints.
This is the car, the wreck car?
This is Mr. Mitnik who's the owner.
Taking wreck cars and putting them in containers and sending them to Europe.
That's right, they're sending them overseas.
That's the Russian people that had the plot by the, by the.
Right, when he took over, we've, he cleaned up the previous occupants' operations and we've had no issues that I'm aware of since then. So he's looking to expand.
That green's wet right there.
Northwestward into the back of the Dickey tract.
You can see that wet across there now.
I used to tow a bunch of cars off of that lot with the previous owner.
They built that last building right there, where the roller skate ring was, that's in the, right in the wetland.
You wanted Teresa to be fifty-foot buffers.
He's requesting twenty-five along one of the lines and we're suggesting that they stay with fifty, but you know, he can make his case to the board. He's unable to come here tonight unfortunately, but.
Yeah, I think he should.
So he, he's not going to access this property down Goshen?
No, it, it's, as presented, it's an extension of the Effingham Park of Commerce. Activities.
Yeah, it's soft and wet over here up by twenty-one. I mean, you could see.
All right. You ready? Go ahead.
I just was gonna say, we're making the land use decision in the variance, right? We're not, I mean, get a wetland permit.
Yeah.
There's nothing to say. Go through that process and get, get through that, that it may or may not be. So I just was curious about what they were, it was hard to read on that. And so staff's current stance would be they would prefer to see fifty feet still adjacent to all the, the B three zonings?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we're not comfortable reducing it to twenty-five. Obviously, the, you know, when the representative is here to make his case and maybe have more wetlands exhibits, he can.
So then we would deny the variance because he wants to reduce it to twenty-five?
That's what you could do.
But your staff recommendation actually still holds that you're suggesting fifty feet.
Yeah, rather than recommend a denial, because I did write this one, I recommend to approve it, but adding a condition that fifty-foot is the minimum buffer width. And then that's what the Board of Commissioners would consider. Do they keep that or do they go with whatever Mr. Mopin requests? So I thought that was the best compromise to move it forward and just let the board decide. And you all can decide obviously too.
Okay, I see it.
All right, is there anything further? Item ten, I'm needing a motion to move this property from B three to I one.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Zipper. I was in favor of approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item eleven is a public hearing for Jay Mopin as agent for Oleg Mitnik requests a variance to reduce required buffers between industrial and various zone parcels located on highway twenty-one, zone B one. Proposed zoning B three and I one. It's the fifth district. Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Does anybody have anything to add?
Just that there's a typo on the agenda. It's currently zone B three.
Currently zone B three. What'd I say? Said zone B one?
Yes.
This is on B three, sorry. Discussion from the board. Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance. Request to approve, the request for the variance to reduce the required buffers between the industrial and various zoned parcels with the following condition. That the applicant must maintain a fifty-foot vegetated buffer between parcel four, six, five dash one and adjacent B three parcels.
Have motion to approve with some stipulations, everyone understand? Call for a second.
Aye.
Second, Mr. Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item twelve, ordinance revision. Effingham County Code of Ordinances relating to meeting day. This is section seven point one point two.
Yes, so for the past year or so, we have been, the planning board date was changed, the ordinance from the fourth Monday of every month to the third Monday of every month. The problem that we're seeing is that there are an awful lot of federal holidays observed on the third Monday of, of the month throughout the year. So it was, it was suggested and seemed to work in the best interest of the public and staff and hopefully the planning board as well. To move meetings to the second Tuesday of the month. Not included, but suggested that this take effect as of the March two thousand twenty-three planning board meeting.
All right, thank you, Ms. Katie. Discussion.
Think it's a good idea.
Do you think it's a good idea? Good, good. I'm quitting.
I'm quitting, so I don't care.
My resignation is already turned in for Christmas. All right, if there anyone else who wish to speak, call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Staff did ask us if we could just make a clarification that start March.
March. With staff recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Election. Appendix C zoning ordinance, article seven. Planning board section seven point one point one. Procedure, annual election of a chairman and vice chairman. All right, who wants, who wants the little hammer?
I make a motion that David Burns stay as the president during the next year.
Four years.
Chairman, chairman, not president, chairman.
Four years, it's one year.
That's my motion.
What about, what about vice chair? Do we do them separate?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All's in favor.
Aye.
What did I name it?
Close the poohs. Four to one. All right, vice chair.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
If you could please make sure that there are no other nominations for chairman.
Are there any other nominations for chairman? Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? Do you want it? Any other nominations for vice chair? All right, I call for a vote or a motion.
A vote.
Vote. So we're voting on Peter? Is he the only one nominated? Why don't you run these elections?
He didn't read her notes.
I've never had to do this. Oh, where are the notes? Hold on. Let me get back to the notes.
So if you would, if you would please ask if there are any further nominations and if there are not, then you can close the nominations and take a vote for Mr. Higgins.
Are there any further nominations? All right, then we'll close the nominations and then we can take a vote on the one nomination. Mr. Higgins. The incumbent, Mr. Peter Higgins. In favor of Peter? Opposed, Peter? Four, four to zero. Is that good enough?
Thank you.
Related officer positions, that's the twenty twenty-three calendar year. Is there any further business to come before this board? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Herb Powell. I'm not real familiar with all your, your procedures here, but I have a question. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about the development going in on Hodgsville Road potentially and all the traffic congestion and that sort of thing. I was wondering if you could share with me what, your understanding is what's supposed to happen at highway thirty in Hodgsville? That nightmare that's going on there. Is that supposed to be a traffic circle?
Be a roundabout.
Gonna be a roundabout? So there'll be a roundabout there where the parkway comes in at Benton Boulevard and then one at highway thirty?
That's correct. And then, as I understand it, two more on Hodgsville Road, one at Collichelmy and one at Goshen, unless they've changed it.
And one at Blue J and where's the other one?
And one at Blue J.
Yeah.
And one at Midland.
Hodgsville and Blue J?
Wait, wait, Hodgsville, maybe not. No, the parkway and Blue J.
And then the parkway and Blue J.
Blue J, yeah.
So they're looking at one at the end of Collichelmy also?
I believe so, yes.
Wow. Okay.
It'll be roundabout drive instead of Hodgsville.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. And, and, and don't get me wrong, I think, I think the roundabouts solve a lot of issues. I mean, I don't know what is, the one at Benton Boulevard is gonna be like when the parkway ties into it. It might be, you know, who knows? We'll have to wait and see what's gonna happen with that. But I've been at the county for about twenty years and it's, it's. I probably, I'm retired, so I probably won't stay in this area based on what's the growth that's going on, because it's just, I'm retired. I, I plan my day like a lot of these folks do. I only, I try to do anything between ten and three. Other than that, I try not to go anywhere, which is unfortunate. So you've heard all of that, that's why I didn't want to gang onto it. I just wanted to find out what the plan was, because I see, I see people surveying on Hodgsville Road right now. So I didn't know if that's gonna be widened, is it gonna be?
I don't know.
How many lanes?
I know they're looking at improvements, but I don't know what those improvements are.
See, I went to the county trying to get a streets overhead light at Collichelmy and Hodgsville, because at night you can't see that intersection. And nothing. People are putting up reflective signs and done all sorts of stuff. And I contacted the power company and they're like, we don't have anything to do with that. There's one across the street, but it's private. So it's, it's an unlit intersection there.
So I, I don't, we can sit here and talk about it all night, but, but we, we don't get to make those decisions.
Right. I just didn't know if anybody else is having those discussions.
Well, I encourage you to come January the third.
I will, I will.
And that, and that's where you can get your questions answered. I mean, unfortunately, they know a lot, well, they know a lot more about plans, future, roadwork. And that is, that is part of some of the frustration of the board for the reason we voted the way we did. I mean, we just aren't sure what they're doing to help it, so.
Right.
Anyway.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there anything further? Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody.